So, welcome everyone. This is our regular meeting of council. We're being electronically on the screen here, and this is September the 6th. And I just want to welcome everyone who may be joining us in the audience, our staff, our council, and anybody else that's with us from the public. So, welcome everyone. And I'd like us to have a moment of silence for a minute, and I'd like to it twofold here. I'd like to keep in mind tonight in our moment of silence, a councillor Jennings' brother, who had an accident two or three weeks ago. I talked to Karen today through email, and her brother is doing well and improving, and our thoughts are with his family and councillor Jennings' family. And secondly, I'd like us to keep in mind the people who are all of the families who were impacted by the the atrocities in Saskatchewan, that being at the James James Smith territory and at the municipality of Weldon. It's among the worst that's ever happened in Canada, and I can just imagine what all the families are going through. So, our thoughts are with all of those families also. So, if we can have a moment of silence, that would be good. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Our first motion was moved by councillor Carroll and second by councillor Straight, that the regular meeting of council agenda dated September the 6th, 2022 be approved with the amendment to move 8A and D from information item to action items. That's 8A and 8D on paper. Let's carry. Thank you. I'll also remind all of council that if you have any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. Next motion would move by councillor Straight, second by deputy Reeve Vandermeer, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council, August the 9th, 2022 be approved, circulated on paper. Those are carried. Thank you. Do we have any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we'll move on. And we have no delegations tonight, and we're going to go straight to our junior planner. And this is going to be the Hydro G peer review. Thank you, Kristen.
Good evening. Following receipt of notification that our VCA was discontinuing Hydro G peer review services, several municipalities joined forces with the County of Lannock and took part in a joint RFP for a new service provider. The staff report that has been presented outlines the chronology of events that resulted in the attached agreements between the county and Blue Metric and JP2G. Hydro G reports are not common at the township level. An example of when one might be used would be if there was a zoning amendment and there was a proposed land use that was more sensitive, let's say, industrial to our residential use, that could be a possibility, but it is very rare. But having these agreements in place provides us with an assurance that if we do require such a study to be peer reviewed, we have someone qualified that will be able to provide those services to us. I wonder if there are any questions and when I'm going to be able to answer.
Any questions from council? Okay, I don't think we do have any, but we do have a motion here. It was moved by Deputy Reeve Vandermeer and second by councillor Carroll that council authorizes the Reeve and clerk to enter into agreements for the provision of hydrological peer review services with Blue Metric Environmental, Inc. and JP2G Consultants, Inc., following legal review by the townships solicitor on paper. Okay, that's Carrie. Thank you, Kristen. I'm not, I just came from the health unit meeting, and we had quite a discussion about the the transition from the sewage, from the sewage system or the septic systems, I should say. So, I kind of added a question, but to the board at the board meeting about these, the, this, this issue, and nobody in the meeting seemed to know anything about it. So, a lot of the staff don't know that there, there is a transition there too. So, it was quite surprising because I did ask the question and nobody could answer me. But it was the people that were involved with the septic systems, not this study. So, anyways, it's a, they were going to be looking into what they said. So, thank you, Kristen. So, moving on, the next one is the report of the committees. And we have a motion here was moved by councillor Carroll and second by councillor Straight, that council approved the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of August the 9th, 2022, and approved the recommendations contained within. On paper, that's carried. And is there any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none. We have a motion moved by councillor Straight, second by deputy Reeve Vandermeer, that council approved the minutes of the Montague Recreation Culture Committee meeting of June the 28th, 2022, and approved the recommendations contained within. All in favor? Those are carried. Thank you. And is there any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none. The next one was, the next motion is moved by deputy Reeve Vandermeer and second by councillors Carroll, that council approved the minutes of the Montague Recreation Culture Committee meeting of July the 26th, 2022, and approved the recommendations contained within. On paper, those are carried. Thank you. Is there any business rising from those minutes? Yes, Jeff.
I, thanks for, I was gonna bring up with the, with the next event coming up from the committee is the mighty machines out on the airport. It's coming together pretty nice, and it looks like we got a good amount. Kudos to our Public Works staff. We're also bringing out some of their vehicles too as well, which is great. But I think it's going to shape up to be a pretty neat event for the kids out there too as well. So, they, once again, we're getting something kind of nice. So, I think it's going to be great for the, great for the area.
You know, my two and a half year old is already looking forward. So, yes.
Yeah, no, it sounds great. Mighty machines, people love it. Will there be opportunities for these kids to climb on the machines, sit on them, go for a ride on them?
That's the plan. Yeah, Hydro is going to be there too as well. Ali was able to reach out with them, which is fantastic. The police coming, we have ambulance coming, our fire guys, I shouldn't throw, I shouldn't, I said, thanks to our Public Works guys, where our fire guys are bringing out some stuff too as well. And then you have to be able to climb on it and touch it and kiss it. There's going to be, there's going to be a barbecue, barbecue, which is really, really cool. Yeah, if I missed anything, please fill me in, but I think.
You're going to give out those project firemen's hats.
There's going to be some, some goodies for the kids as well from various organizations. So, it's going to be, hopefully, weather holds out for us, and I think it's going to be a really good day.
What's the date again?
October 1st.
Who's doing the barbecue?
The rec committee.
Five bucks gets you in, gets you a hot dog and a drink.
I need some help with that, Jeff, or?
Yeah, and I think we're recruiting some help too as well if we can, especially we have to be parking and cooking, so.
And different cooking packages, same, same idea?
You gotta turn the hot dogs a little more.
Well, I can do that. Cool.
Just a question, was this the meeting that where you discussed the all candidates night?
No.
Was not, no. Okay. So, those minutes will be coming to the next meeting. Thanks. All right. Thanks, Jeff, for that update. And Ali, that's great. So, moving on, we don't have no petitions, and we have some bylaws. A couple of them here, and I'll read them. The first one was moved by councillor Straight and second by deputy Reeve Vandermeer, the bylaw 3932, 2022, being a bylaw to enter into agreements with Blue Metric Environmental, Inc. and JP2G Consultants, Inc. for hydrological peer review services. If you read it for a second and third time and pass, sign and seal this sixth day of September, 2022, on paper. Scary. Thank you. The next bylaw was moved by deputy Reeve Vandermeer, seconded by councillor Carroll, that bylaw 3933, 2022, being a bylaw to authorize the registration of a site plan agreement with Garnet De Vries and Dorian, Dorian De Vries, the owners of property described as part of Lot 17, concession B, Township of Montague, County of Lannock, designated as part three on 27 hour dash 10249. Be read for a second and third time and pass, signed and sealed this sixth day of September, 2022. It's carried. Thank you. And next bylaw moved by councillor Carroll, second by councillor Straight, the bylaw 3934, 2022, being a bylaw to control, sorry, I guess, yeah, I'll wait to ask the question to the public first.
And two items were pulled from information to action.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we're going to go on. We have no, we have no motions, the notices of motions, and under the correspondence, we have two items that while the action, the mandatory, there's two action items that were moved forward, A and D. The first one is mandatory firefighter certification, and I think Jeff, that's yours, right?
I did bring it forward. I mean, just reading about, obviously, all of the certification that the firefighters have to go through. I did have a quick chat with Chief Grigoryk as well, asking him a little bit more about it, and, you know, and stating that, obviously, the amount of time. And if I missed anything, I'm, I can straighten out some chip in if I miss something here. But it takes about 160 hours to get guys in just that first level of training, and, and there's obviously a cost to that too as well that we budgeted for, and, and there's a cost there, but also the, the retention of the, of some of the guys after you try to put in that time or, and, and everything else, there's a cost to it, and it's, and it's, and it's, it's hard to do, and, and I think the training is important, and Chief Grigoryk like fully echoed that, that the training is important, but it's, it is difficult, and there's got to be ways to maybe make it a little bit easier, a little bit better. So, it's just basically supporting this, this, this part here, just to kind of push back to make, to see if there's, if there could be funding that could come down or, or to help us out a little bit with that training from the province.
Yeah, and I think I did attend one of the sessions about this at the AMO, and there were sim, a lot of similar comments, and, and one of the comments that somebody made was the fact that in, in some volunteer fire departments, you have firefighters who, who join, and they get trained, and then they leave after two or three years. So, it seems to be, it was seemingly kind of a waste of money. Luckily, we've never had that problem. I think in Monogu, I think we have a pretty stable, great group of firefighters.
And Miles, Miles said that, and he says, but what happened, we don't, we can't see in the future. So, in two years from now, and we have a great crew right now and everything else, but I mean, some guys could move, it could, something could happen, right? And, and then you, and then you could be in a, a bit of a pickle too as well. So, let's say, it's, you know, we don't, we don't want to be up that creek. So, it's a, yeah.
We are back.
Whatever else to remember too, there's a huge commitment to the volunteers, right? Because, you know, we've taken on some of this within ourselves this year, this started to do some of those training to try and alleviate some of that problem, but typically, you would have to go to Almont or something like that, take the course. And it's every study, it's every weekend, right? So, when you start piling up six, seven, eight weekends in a row, that's a lot, that's a lot of work for a volunteer person, a lot to ask, a lot to ask, right? You know, that commitment, it's kind of like commitments, everything else. So, we bring this stuff in-house a little bit, they're not alleviated, a little bit of that stress. Lower is the input cost a little bit, but there's still the internal costs of us having to, you know, actually do the training. You know, you can't do by yourself. It takes, it takes two or three of us for sure, and it takes a lot of time and effort.
When they do that training, does that go towards points for them?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, if you go out and do training, it's, it's a, you get essentially boosting point tally, point to point tally, yeah.
Just a question, is there something that we can apply for grants for this or?
So, at the beginning of August, I believe there was notification that there's going to be about $750,000 coming out from the Fire Marshals Association, or I might have that wrong, the acronym. But they haven't provided the links as to how to apply yet. So, there's going to be some of that funding potentially available, and I think as there's more pushback, I think there's going to be some changes coming from that perspective, but as councillor Straight said, I think that we're in a pretty good position, but I mean, but whenever there's available funding, we always want to get it. So.
Yeah, but it's up to nearly budgeted for so far.
So far, we have, yeah.
Yeah, and 750 is really not a lot of money for all of Ontario.
No, no.
Break that down into four, there's four municipalities, so. There's more volunteer people, there's more volunteer firefighters in the province than there are full-time guys.
Oh, yeah.
So, we, we, we look at it that way, there's, that's certainly not enough money. Seven hundred and fifty thousand, like you get 10 bucks a piece.
Yeah, if you could look at how much money is actually spent then on, on all of the full-time paid fire departments. Yeah, it's like night and day, black and white.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up, councillor Carroll. And also, I think you have number D, the resolution support for the correspondence township of Perry.
Yeah, this was a, I think a pretty easy one, is a bill, private members bill, Bill, see, maybe we can all read it, but real quick, 233, that's really just an education piece in order to, for the abuse in homes to children and to women suffered this specifically. But just, I think, looking for more education to judges and to, and to try to protect some of these vulnerable people. There's a lot more that needs to be done to make sure that these people are protected. This, this is a step, I don't think it's the entire full step, but I think this is a step that hopefully it'll get through, and it's one of, we should be supporting that to to do whatever we can for, for that safety side, so.
And is there a resolution which had been passed by the township of Perry that?
And supported from the town of Aurora, yeah, that's right.
That you think that we should be supporting this, because that's normally what we do, and then we send it back to them and all other, it goes out to all other municipalities, so.
Yeah, well, it's going, I think it's going to the, it's going to Prime Minister, it's going to all of the leaders up there and, and the, yeah.
But do you want, do you want to move a motion then, and then we can have it on the books, and then we'll hold on it, and it'll be, it'll be then sent back to this, to the township of Perry that we supported it?
Yeah.
Okay, so can you word that up there, Ali, please? So, this was moved by councillor Carroll and second by deputy Vandermeer, that we support the private members bill regarding Kir's law. No problem. But this is good, because the more, the more other municipalities that support something, it gets, it gets a lot of legs, so it moves forward a lot faster.
It's a quieter issue, I mean, it's a huge issue out there, and we know it's, it's a big issue in rural municipalities. Like, this is Saskatchewan right now, so if you went through what the history of one of those gentlemen over there, I heard on the radio this morning, there's more laws like this in one place, he wouldn't have been in on the streets, right? I guess, this is it. I mean, a lot of us repeat stuff where we, you know, it's like, oh, we knew that was, you know, that, that person was doing it, and it's been going on for years. It's like, why? It's, it's all of that stuff that's just mind-boggling, so it's, yeah.
Okay, so the Township of Montague Council supports private bill, private members bill, see 233 Kir's Law, and that the Clerk of Management advised the local MPP, MPP, and all other Ontario municipalities.
That's great. So, all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Ali. Thanks, Jeff, for that. So, moving up, moving forward, we have no unfinished business, another business tonight that I know of, that I've heard of. And before we adjourn, I'm going to ask if we have any questions from the public. And no, Tom, and? No, and also Haley, do we have any questions?
Nope, none.
Okay, thank you. We then have a motion moved by councillor Carroll and second by councillor Straight, the bylaw 3934, 2022, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its regular meeting held on September the 6th, 2022. Be read for a second and third time and pass, sign and seal this sixth day of September, 2022, on paper. That's carried. Thank you. Moved by councillor Straight, second by councillor, deputy Reeve Vandermeer, that this meeting do now adjourn at 6:25 PM until September the 20th, 2022, at 6:00 PM or until the call of the brief subject you need on paper, and that's carried. Thank you. So, we're going to go straight into our committee, the whole meeting. We'll just take one minute to change over. Thank you. Because that's the second person. So, welcome again, everyone, to our committee, the whole meeting, and this meeting is also being livestreamed electronically, so September the 6th. And welcome everyone to this meeting. And we do have a motion moved by councillor Carroll and second by councillor Straight, that the committee, the whole agenda dated September the 6th, 2022 be approved. On paper. Thank you, Carrie. I'll also remind all of council again that if you have any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. And we have no delegations tonight. The first report of the municipal officers is going to be yours, Steve. Thank you. This is on the Maguire Road Safety Improvements.
Thank you, Reeve.
Yes.
Hi, so this report tonight is on Maguire Road land donation, so staff have approached by a landowner with their willingness to donate land, transfer land to the township for safety improvements. This location is about two kilometers from Carroll Road, known as Linton Hill, in those residents. It's a narrow, regular, now it's about 44 feet wide, and attached to picture on the report, kind of showing how narrow it is. And this donation was widened to 66 feet, and allows staff to complete safety improvements and make it a much safer area. There's a pretty good blind spot on this end. There's been lots of near misses. The landowner did state in his letter that there would be a couple of stipulations on timing, so he, it's an open offer until 2023, November. And if it was agreed upon, it would have to be completed by 2026, which is more of the reasonable benchmarks for us to achieve. The existing road's about six meters wide, which really is not very wide, that's including the shoulders, so it's very narrow. Snow storage is next to impossible, and that, again, approaches on the roadway. As in that one picture, it's kind of, if there's two vehicles passing on that area, it's extremely tight, so that's why it's very important to address that. Staff reached out to Hydro, and they gave me a generous Class C estimate, which is plus minus 50%. So.
What does that mean?
So, that, that's included in the pricing. I also broke down my pricing. I hope it is better than 50% plus minus, so. Anyway, so there's pricing there on what the project would be. Our Public Works staff does have good expertise in this kind of stuff. We could complete it in-house. We would be required to rent some equipment with operators such as a 20-ton shovel. We have to get a roller in, possibly a bulldozer, and then if we run into better off, we're simply hammer to get rid of that. So, that'd be a couple of things we need. I put in the report, a couple of different strategies we could do. If we do it in-house, it could be staged over two or three years by the time we get legal with surveys. Complete clearing, grubbing, one year, and then the ditching excavation of that another year. So, that's kind of a way that we could keep the budget implications relatively small a year to year, and keep the cost down, that's completing it in-house. The other way in-house would be to kind of sink somewhere into it, but that would not be recommended by staff as we're deleting the rest of the township. And the recommendation by staff is to bring this forward to 2023 budget discussions, and that'll be the next step moving forward. Any questions?
So, just one thing first, Steve, and I, I was pretty happy to see this, because I'm sure this council and maybe a previous one or two councils have heard me ranting about that hill for several years. And, but I have one main question, and that is that, like, at the time, maybe one or two, when we looked at it before, the gentleman who, who owned the land on the north side of Maguire, at the time, wasn't ready to, to donate that land, but obviously now is. But at the time, the Public Works people at the time told us that we could have, if, if he gave us enough of a sliver, it was only a sliver of land, but if he gave us enough of a sliver of land to, on the north side, we wouldn't have to move the hydro poles. So, that's, it really, I was surprised to see that in the report. So, because obvious, obviously, the, as it is, the hydro poles are too close to the road. And at the time, they told us at the time, this is probably, I don't know, six, seven, eight years ago, it was going to be $10,000 per pole, and I believe there's six poles. So, we're talking, at the time, it was going to be 60 grand, but had we been able to, had the person been willing to give us the land at the time, there was going to be some ditching and fencing that we were going to have to do for that person, but, but if we, if the sliver was wide enough, and as I said, it was like, I think it was, I recall something like 17 feet, wasn't much land. And we saw the, we saw the report at the time where there was going to be just a very slight change in the curvature of the road from there to Carroll Road, wasn't much. But the big thing was that we weren't going to have to move the hydro poles. So, I'm just wondering, that, that's my main question there, is? So I'm just wondering, that, that's my main question there is have we looked at that? Like, have we been able to discuss this enough to the, with the landowner to see if we could get enough of the land, enough land there without moving the hydro poles?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I didn't explore not moving hydro poles is that I don't really see another option to be completely honest without realigning. It's very straight road. And without moving the poles, I really see no option. Yeah, to be honest, I really don't think there is an option other than to have these three poles moved. As in the picture, I kind of highlighted the two major poles and I don't see any way not to move hydro poles in this case.
Yeah, I guess my only suggestion was, or at least at the time, we were being told that if, if we were able to move the road. Far enough to the right or to the north on to the, I guess, yeah, that's the north side. If, then we wouldn't need to, we wouldn't need to move them.
Yeah, that's, so your point is moving it closer to the north side. So that, that would be kind of where we're widening. But we'd also be ditching on the other side to create adequate drainage.
Yeah.
So I mean, majority of the widening would probably take place on the north side, which would require the one guy poles to be moved. But the other poles are still right on the shoulder of the road. So they would be required, not all six. I had to look at it. They said they could get away with what I was planning to do, only move three poles.
But those poles are all, they're all on the south side, right?
All but one is.
All but one?
Yeah. So there's a guy on top of the hill. That's.
Wonder if that's a new, a new one.
But the, the shape of the reed is burial.
Okay. So can, and like, could. Like, could you get away with just using those six poles on the south side without that other pole?
I don't believe so. It would be Hydro's call on how their physics of their poles and everything works. But I don't believe.
We must be looking at it differently now because I know at the time, we were told at the time that they just had to, you know, that, that if, if there was enough land on the north side, they wouldn't have to move the poles. So I would only suggest that, you know, in the future, we just explore that. And because this, this is really important. It's probably certainly one of the most dangerous areas in, in Monty D Township. And you mentioned about the two vehicles, but even worse, if, if one of those vehicles is a snowplow, that's even worse. Because if you imagine going o- over that hill with blade out. There's almost no, no room for another vehicle. So it's, it's great to see this being moved forward. So. We have some questions, I think. Yes, first, I think was Buzz and then.
Excellent report, Steve. Glad to see this is finally happening. Down that road many times. The hill itself, are you kind of bringing it down somewhat?
That, that'd be the idea. That would help with sightlines. And we'd also do a grade raise on the existing roadway itself and the two depressions coming into the hill. That will raise up a little bit. So we wouldn't be taking it down too, too much, but it would be bringing it down enough just to cut that sightline.
Or is that really into the rock?
That's right. And, and there's potential rock on the sides until we reduce test, that's we wouldn't really know what we're getting into, but staff has put.
You mentioned you might have to get some outside equipment or whatever. Have you been in touch with companies about getting outside equipment or?
No, this is extremely high level at this point. We do have pricing from local. Competence that do less than.
Perfect. I'm glad to see it being done.
Yes, it's great.
Yeah, thank you, Ray. Thanks, you guys, Steve. This is all great news. Obviously, I know this is on my first term of council as well, when we're trying to get this taken care of. So it's great that the landlords came, came board and. Offer up the land. I guess my question is, you already mentioned that you're going to bring one up on both sides of the part or two, not for the hill. Just in the one picture, it looks like the road's still relatively narrow as it goes down. Or is there extra, like in, like, how far could you potentially go there? I guess is the landowner willing to go further if we wanted to expand, like widen up the road right now for the full length of his property or?
Yeah, that's a great question. So yeah, he's the whole property with the project. I mean, he is willing to donate or exchange that. So my project has had a hundred fifty years from top of the hill each way. That's kind of what the project.
So you've taken, you've seen that whole piece, widen it as much as you can. And then there'll just be after that part of it. This question, thanks for, for Allison. And when the person makes a donation like this, do we put a value on that?
So all of this will be discussed if it gets approved in budget. So right now. It, it depends because he may be donating land, but he may want a fence or something installed. To like, that may be the trade-off. So, but usually if somebody donates a piece of land, it's for a dollar. And that's what gets put in the legal document. Again, this is, this is more to say, okay, if there's interest, we'll, we'll bring it forward at budget time. And then Steve will have a better idea of those type of things at that time.
When we had the discussions before, you'll remember there because at the same time, we were moving forward with rectifying the problems at the corner of Carolyn. And, and Maguire, like it was such a soup hole there. And I think there was a cordial road involved and everything else, but. You know, I guess I, I would think that, or I guess it's more of a question than like, do, could we still use more of that rock fill? To possibly widen the road a little bit more where you get closer to Carroll Road. Because there's still probably a fair amount of water there on both sides, especially in the spring and that. But I just wondered if there was, because it would be an easy way to get extra fill there.
Absolutely. So it'd be similar to something like we've done on Ford right now at the S Ben. So we use our fill created and white. Along wherever we see fit. But if there's areas along Maguire that could use it, then it's going to cut down our haul, save money. So it makes sense logistically to do that.
Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I was, I was just to chime in there. I mean, I, I think this is, this is great. You know, I talked with a bunch of the, the landlords on, on that road. And they're obviously all concerned about that hill and, and they're, they're quite happy that this is even talked about right now at council. And, and the echo where you just kind of said too as well with all that fill that was, that was put in on that Ford corner. And if you do, if you do a cruise down there now. With Stephen and, and his crew did, is filled in on that bad corner on Ford Road there. And made it so it's a lot safer when you're going around that corner. If someone was to slide off, at least they're sliding off onto something and not into the abyss. So I mean, I think that's, that's been a great, I mean, that's, it's, it's great initiative to as well, like to show. Taking that fill and putting it in those spots around the township and just the suggestion now of, of being able to go down Maguire once again. I mean, that's, those are. Great innovative ideas that it's great that that's being done because that's, that's just increasing the safety at a minimal cost at that point too as well. So. Whereas I'm, I'm, it sounds like we're all in favor. This is good, which is going to be really good for the Maguire Road people. So that's good.
Yeah. So our, our motion is going to be, if we pass this, it's to move forward so that the new council will have deliberate with the. With the budget. But I guess I'll, I'll just leave it that. You know, it, it would be again, my, my suggestion would be that if, when you're having these discussions, that if. We were able to move the road far enough on the north side. Then could we get away without moving? Any of those poles on the left side? Because right now, like as I recall, I haven't been on it in the last few months or so, but. But basically there's like, the ditch is right beside the road. And I think that maybe the hide, the poles were almost right on, on top, almost a tough ditch. But if the whole road is moved, moved forward, then, because I, I know at the time, that would have been fine with the hydro. They said it was fine.
So may I? So I think what's, what Steve has put in front of us this evening is. A high level cost assessment is kind of worst case scenario type of thing. And if, if this council is interested in saying, yes, please include it in the twenty-twenty-three budget. That's what we're looking at. If there's alternative solutions, that will be discussed. Because this is worst case. We're saying this is kind of. High level, what we think high end, maybe mid to high end might be. So that's all, it's not so much saying this is exactly what we're doing through. It's kind of saying this is worst case here. If we have to move all these poles, that's what's going to happen. If there's alternative solutions, clearly we will bring that forward. We want to get the best bang for our buck.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, that's great. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion moved by Council Straight, seconded by Deputy Vandermeer that Council Direct Staff to bring Maguire Road Safety Improvements forward. To the twenty-twenty-three budget discussions on the favor. It's great. Thanks. And the next report is Chris, I guess. Yes. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Oh, sorry. Yeah, for the land acknowledgement. Sorry.
I put her last. Yeah. So as council may recall, at their June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one special council meeting, they directed staff to explore and come up with some appropriate wording with respect to the Algonquin. Territory land acknowledgement. So that is what is being presented in front of you this evening. We have done some research, contacted other municipalities as well and come up with a draft. Acknowledgement that could be at the beginning of our agendas, our council agendas. If council approves, then we would have to post in the paper to change our procedural. So again, that would have to wait. Till the new council, but at least everything is ready to go at that time.
Any questions, Jeff?
So that, that.
The italic portion.
The italic part is basically what we said before.
Yes.
Every meeting.
Yes.
That's, that's pretty consistent with like every other municipality and, and the, and the kind of what's there, like you said, so it's a.
Yeah. The only thing I would also recommend is that I think maybe on an annual basis, and I know other municipalities are starting this as well. They reach out to one of the elders of the nations and have them come in and just educate us, right? And, and, and do, so and do like a smudging ceremony and things like that. So that would also be a recommendation that we look at doing, moving forward as well.
Is there a, I know there in the government, there's your one closer by here.
I'm not sure. Um, we, I think in the last recommendation, it would be left up to the Reeve to contact them as the head of council. So. But I can get that information. I, I believe Larry does it for others though.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's very good.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. I was going to mention his name, but also not necessarily after the fact, but before the fact. Would it be advisable for us to just run this by Larry?
Absolutely. I mean, we, we can absolutely run it by Larry because this is not going to get posted in a paper to change our procedural. So it's a whole process. We can't just change our procedural. It has to get posted in public input and things like that. So. If there's consensus for me to send this to Larry, I will send this to Larry.
Like, because I, I've been involved in developing a couple of other acknowledgements. And that's what we did. I think one was possibly through the health unit and the other was the LGL food court. But that's what we did in both cases. And there were, there was just a couple of little wordsmithing changes, but. It's just to kind of reach out and show respect to them and ask, you know, them, their advice. So. Do you need a motion or?
Just consensus.
Is everybody okay with that? So let's be, thanks. Thanks for bringing this to us, Ali. Moved by Counselor Deputy Vandermeer and seconded by Counselor Carol that Council Direct Staff to post as per schedule B. Section three and four of the procedural bylaw thirty-seven, sixty-seven, twenty-twenty, to include land acknowledgement on the agenda. For each council meeting and that council direct clerk administrator to bring back an amendment to bylaw thirty-seven, sixty-seven, twenty-twenty. Once the requirements are completed. On favor. Okay, and that's carried. Thank you. And the next one is just, thanks.
Housing affordability task force was created to engage municipal leaders, planners, developers and housing advocates amongst other stakeholders. To address the lack of affordable housing for Ontarians and to make recommendations to the provincial government. And the result of those discussions is the More Homes for Everyone Act Bill one oh nine. So this report that you have before you outlines the changes that directly impact the township of Monty D and other municipalities. Including penalties associated with delays in approving site plans and issuing decisions on zoning by law amendments. Extending the period of time for approval of site plans and the delegation of.
Okay, we're back.
We're back.
Hey, Jeff. Sure. And, and me, I, like, like, Council Street said, we're not going to fix it tonight. But I think of, of one thing about this council and. The future council too as well is being aware of when this is turning into a bigger problem by other agencies. And we're getting fine from it that we're really pushing back hard on, on whatever agency from the province or, or the conservation authority could be slowing it down. So it's, it's, I think, really making sure that we're listening to Kirsten when she's telling us that there's a problem with delays from other agencies. I think that's really important. So I look forward to that information. We're going to get back to as well as we go forward with that. Thanks, Kristen.
Yes.
It's on the, that's Counselor Carol saying, how many agencies do we have to go through?
It would depend on what the application was. Generally speaking, site plans would go RBCA. In certain situations, they would also be Parks Canada if they're waterfront properties. When we're talking zoning amendments, the Planning Act prescribes who you have to circulate those applications to. And it's dependent on where the property is located and what sort of characteristics that property might have.
So on any of these site plans, so we have to go through RBCA on everyone?
Yes.
That's where the whole up is.
So any other questions? Seeing no more questions in person. We have a motion was moved by. Counselor Carol and seconded by Counselor Straight that the committee, the whole receives this Bill one oh nine, More Homes for Everyone Act report as information. On favor? That's carried. Thank you. And moving forward, we have no reports of committees nor petitions, motions, notice of motions and no unfinished or other business. And before we adjourn, do we have any questions? Any questions, Haley?
Nope, none.
Yeah, thank you.
Me neither.
I was hoping maybe Tommy could prolong it till seven or something. You're going to help us break a record maybe or something? Anyways, thanks, everybody. Then we do have, I don't have a sheet for the. Yep. So we'll need a mover and second to adjourn. Moved by Jeff, seconded by Ian. That we adjourn at. Six fifty-one. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thanks.